I think Melissa must be there. She's on the tour. They can't do more with her. She was over today, that lady.
Oh, she's like the...
Oh, the board member.
Yeah, that kind of one. Ask questions while you're there. Don't be long.
So these are... I don't think I picked the podium.
Yeah, yeah.
I know much about them, though. Missouri Valley, yeah. But I didn't know much about them.
That's kind of named leader. I don't think senior's going against.
I'm a big question Miami, Pennsylvanians, ACC. You don't have a guy in the... Oh, they're all pretty darn good. They always should try to get into NIT. Then to extend the season. They did through Mark's math, because he's a last of the state. Where'd he go? He couldn't move. We can't play. Paul's in the red. He's a damn fool. He wanted to go and ride with Dad, but he needed to be in the school. He got mad at that. And that was pretty...
Good evening, everyone. Do this stand well, someplace? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Jed. Me, Ed, Gordon, John.
Yes.
Polly. Melissa? Yes. Rob.
Steve.
I noticed, Andy, you just took the notes on that. That's wonderful. So you're going to act as Secretary of Brokheim tonight?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
John?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay, remember not to say it all.
Uh, superintendent's report. So basically, I've got one tonight. Well, I got one announcement before we do that. I would like to introduce everyone to Steve Richard of Hodges and Louiezy. Tony was unavailable to be here tonight, so Steve has graciously joined us. You want to...
Yeah, I, just as an introduction to me, I'm a partner at the firm Hodges and Louiezy. I've been at the firm for about thirteen years, and I specialize in FOIA and open meetings and those kinds of issues. So I've had the pleasure of working with Andy for about a year on things like FOIA and meetings. And I'm actually thrilled to meet him for the first time in person. But, you know, thankful also to the district for having us here, although I know it's, of course, not the best. And hopefully, in the future, at some point, an attorney won't need to be present at your meeting, which is no disparagement to my profession. But, you know, one thing that is really important in my practice is encouraging school boards. There are microcosms of representative democracy, and law provides the rules and the context in which that happens. And really, the importance of civility and civil discussion is really huge. And at some point, it's my hope that the level of civility of discussions will, you know, result in no needless accusations of illegal conduct and thus need for having an attorney here. I mean, I would love to be here for, you know, as many meetings as you want, but that is, that's all around a way of saying, "Thank you for having me present, Andy," and hope that the level of civility of tonight's meeting is as good as possible.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. At this time, I will turn the mic only item over to Amy Harris, who she's going to have a presentation on the Reading Rocks program that she does very well for this district, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Board of Education, for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm here to present, as he said, some information on a reading project that I coordinate at our junior high called Reading Rocks. Some of you have volunteered in the past, and I'll just say, some of you have volunteered in the past, and some have already volunteered for this year as well. Thank you so much for your support and involvement with this. However, I am still in need of volunteers, more volunteers, so I am here not just to inform, but to also recruit. Basically, this program works in this way. I match all of my eighth grade language arts students with an adult or, in recent years, high school age reading partner as well. This year, with 109 language arts students, I need 109 volunteers. Each student selects a book from my collection that will be happening this next week. Each student then reads that book. Every student has a different book. The second copy of that book that I also have, I deliver to the adult volunteer on the other side of the thing, and they also read the book. So they each have their own copy. They read at their own times. They do not have to coordinate and match up to read at the same time or anything like that. The correspondence about the book is done completely online now. Since I've come to the district, I created a webpage that is for this particular purpose only. The only people with access to this site are the people that I give permission to, which means my 109 students, my 109 volunteers this year, and of course, me. This correspondence happens just four times between each student and the adult. At the end of the program, we do have an opportunity for everyone involved to attend what we call our Reading Rocks closing program. It's at the junior high this year on May 2nd at 5:00 p.m. This is fun, it's short. The students get the chance to meet you if you participate or meet their reading partners, if they can be there. Also, this is mostly a student-led program. It's always exciting for me to see my students step up to be leaders. I want to strongly encourage you, I'll say this to everybody, to participate if you feel that this is something you enjoy doing. I would also like to ask you to pass along this information to others. Maybe you can thank someone that you know who likes to read or who will be willing to do this. Please pass along this information or give them my email or something. They can call the school, whatever. I'm willing to talk to anybody because I need about 26 more people. I think it's always beneficial to show kids that reading is important. I also think it's important to show them that reading can be fun. I further think it's an interesting way to show students that we care about them and that we want to invest in them in both a fun and educational way. So if you have any questions for me about this program, I would love to answer them at this time.
Do you sign the novel to people you don't like? Luckily, last year, I didn't get a novel, so it's fortunate.
The way, to answer your question, I, the people that I have close contact with or people have emailed before, maybe they know a particular student. I've had a request already from a, actually, she's a retired teacher. She usually tells me there's some kid that she knows or a family friend, or she remembers them maybe from younger years, and she requests to be matched up with that student. She doesn't really care about what book she reads. She wants to see if she knows the student and wants to be matched up with them. I can do that.
Right.
I can also, if you want a particular kind of book, I can try to do that. All the kids pick the books, you know. The people that really want that, I can contact you once I have all my students' names in the books and then let them. So yes, I can do that. Otherwise, it is random. Do try to help out people that say they don't have trees or not use such options. Or don't have a whole lot of time. Yes, yeah. So, yeah, I can make some preferences.
I think how you have it set up, though, even if you don't have much time, you still, you know, with doing it in four different sections, you're only reading like this one, this one, and that's individual. Because, you know, if you don't have all...
Some people like to read the whole book and be done with it. So, and I have it set up, what she's talking about is about a fourth. I just tell people to read about a fourth because that's what the students are signing, about a fourth every week or so. And some of them read the whole thing. And I, you know, I always tell them, "Just be careful, only comment on a fourth." And some people do the whole thing. I just jot down notes, and that way, it's all done, and then I just have to put it in on certain things. I do send you reminders on email and you haven't put in your information because the kids look forward to seeing what you have to say. So, if you have any other questions, I'll answer them, but otherwise, thanks for listening. I thank you in advance for your participation and for encouraging others to participate. You can email me or you can tell me right now. Anybody want to just jump right out of that and say another thing?
I could be a, like, salesman or something.
Yeah. Everyone?
Well, I already did, does that count?
Yes, yes, some of you already have, yes. Mandy does it every year. Polly does it every year. Mr. Johnson does it. The administration is great. They, most of them knew it.
Don't look at that one. Don't look at me.
Don't look, no eye contact? When I worked in the same building as him, I could pressure him into it. Now that I don't see him every day, he doesn't feel the guilt, I guess.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
She was headed to the point.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, this time, we will move on to recognition of guests and public comments. And I have, tonight, I have two people signed up. I have Sheila Reiman to speak for five minutes, and I have Jeanne Miller for two minutes. So whichever person would like to go first would be great.
Hi, Melvin.
Okay.
Just stand right here?
Absolutely, you're fine, yep.
My name is Sheila Reiman. I'm here to talk to you about an issue with my youngest child. I've been dealing with this issue for over 12 years, as this is my third child through the school system. My hardships are very upsetting and also the concerns I have about our schools. What if this happens to another child and that child doesn't come home? I have given the schools, transportation office, and superintendent copies of my divorce decree, which states, "Said children are presently residing with the mother. The parties agree that the mother is the fit and proper person to have custody of said children. This was filed on November 30th, 2005. Certified letters were also sent to Ronald Alverdes on December 5th, 2008, from my attorney, as well as to Dan Cox on November 15th, 2013, also to Travis Wyatt on January 18th, 2018, hand-delivered to Andy Johnson on February 28th of this year. I am the primary physical custodian of my child, and his father's parenting time does not include picking up the child from school. These exact words were stated in a letter from my attorney sent to Mr. Wyatt on January 18th of this year. Only again, one week later, for my child's father to pick him up, and he didn't come home from school. It happened also on December 23rd of 2017, when my son was asked to come off the bus after already getting on. The bus driver allowed it, and my son didn't come home again. I did not give permission. No one bothers to tell me. He just doesn't come home. There are way too many times this has happened over the years. I informed Mr. Johnson that my husband, Jim, and I will be calling the sheriff every time he does not come home. And my reasoning for calling the police is that the disrespect and the schools failing to follow a court order. I also know from experience of involving the police that they do follow the law. They follow the custody and visitation agreement that is in the divorce decree, and that has been signed by a judge. Moving forward to this month, my attorney has spoken with the school's attorney. She is in the opinion that in order for the school district to have proper and clear direction, that they would prefer to have an order of the court specifically prohibiting Wes from picking the child up. This, again, is very costly for me, and I will have to take off time from my job again to appear in court. So my husband and I met with my attorney last week and informed him we would move forward and file a petition with the court for such relief. He informed us that he felt it was a 100% chance that the judge would grant this. He also informed us that after we received this court order and my child is taken again from the school or bus and harmed in any way, we could pursue a class-action lawsuit against the school. I am here again to say, I'm here for the protection of my son and the protection of all the children in the school. I would just like the school to follow the law and treat me how they would like to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I'm Jeanne Miller. My parents are the late Ryan from the well of my heart. My seven siblings and I graduated from Grove School and Newton High School. Three years ago, my husband, Mark, and I moved from Yorkville, Illinois back to Newton. Our son and his wife live in California. Tonight, I want to say thank you very much for all of you sitting here at the table. Sounds like you've also worked before you got here tonight, for each of the good things that you have done for the school district. I appreciate all of your time, energy, sacrifice, and expertise. Likely, most people, including me, have no clue how much goes into it. This is my favorite kind of gum. It's called Dantene Ice, and the reason I like it is because of flavor lasts longer, and it even claims that it will last, keep your breath fresh for 40 minutes after you quit chewing it. Using this lingering effect of the gum as an analogy, I'd like to propose that after your time serving the school district is complete, the lingering effect of part of what you did could last 40 months or maybe even 40 years. How about 40 decades? Soon, I will give each of you a pack of gum, which you can use to chew on these thoughts at your leisure. Board members, I invite you to pause and reflect on what it was like for you when you were elected or appointed to the board.
For 10 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. You were granted such a tremendous privilege and responsibility, and perhaps you felt quite honored. How long did those feelings last? The tremendous privilege and responsibility sure haven't diminished. At this spring season of new beginnings, I invite you to give yourselves a new beginning.
Thank you.
Just pass these off.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak for two minutes? All right, at this time, I need a motion to approve the regular enclosures for February 15th, 2018.
I'm making it.
Second.
Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I need approval of all financial reports, including the balance sheet, bills, and payroll. I'm making it.
Second.
I need to get the chairs. I need to get a...
Are you going to email to me?
No, it's not an email. It's not... I mean, I got... It's not...
Okay, I didn't prepare that. I called it. You did, right. I was on that.
John?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
It's...
Okay. At this time, we need approval for the summer food service program waiver. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
Second.
Melissa? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thanks for the acceptance of donations. We only had one this month, which is rare, but we do appreciate that one as well. Please accept the anonymous donation, $350, to the Reed program, the sole purchase of books for the students. So I need a motion. I'm making it.
Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thanks for the acceptance of donations. We only had one this month, which is rare, but we do appreciate that one as well. Please accept the anonymous donation, $350, to the Reed program, the sole purchase of books for the students. So I need a motion. I'm making it.
Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Positive news and communication, I am going to, as we move on at this point right now, we are going to have, we have copies of it over there. Each board member has one. I am not going to read off of it, and I'll tell you the reason I'm not going to read off of it is I don't want single people out. It's always been me that just pulls out which pieces I like. There's a lot of information, and I feel like it's fair to everybody. So this will take care of, everybody has it in their possession, and if you're grateful you get it for us, we've done justice to everybody. So appreciate you administrators getting that to me, and we'll get that passed on. Next is FOIA requests. As you can see, we have four FOIA requests. We've got a fifth one on here as well. Again, our FOIA requests are on the website. Hopefully, I'm trying to keep them up to date as soon as we've completed them and they've gone out. So you can seek our website for that information. However, with E, the FOIA request for review, we've got a FOIA request, actually, a few, I believe. So I've asked Steve if you wouldn't mind to give us a little bit of update, maybe, on that.
So, FOIA requests for review are, obviously, Attorney General complaints about FOIA requests on this event. We have a pending where there's a possible resolution, informal resolution. It was a request for review filed by John Kraft, and the issue is whether the district's redaction of the district's bills were appropriate. And Mr. Kraft argues that the district's redaction of the district's credit card numbers and that the district's redaction of account numbers was unlawful. And so, the Attorney General committed to our firm that in lieu of providing a position statement explaining why the redaction is improper, we have the option, the district has the option of, apparently, Mr. Kraft offered to have the district re-redact all of 565 pages of bills and just leave the last four digits of the account number. Now, unfortunately, this resolution comes a little bit late because, well, there was already a FOIA request for review filed by Mr. Kraft concerning the district's redaction to bank statements. The district redacted the bank account numbers in order to prevent against, perhaps, someone stealing public funds using the account, bank account number information. So Mr. Kraft challenged those redactions, and we already, our firm already prepared a response to the Attorney General explaining why bank account numbers are a problem to redact in FOIA response. So really, our current, you know, request for review that jumps into those 565 pages of bills, I mean, it's the same issue, so our response is going to be pretty short. So basically, the attorney's fees that you would save by accepting this proposed resolution without being significant, especially compared in light of the amount of attorney's fees that have been expended on other FOIA requests and open meetings, requests for reviews, and so forth and so on. And I would just like to note that this particular request for review that's pending is actually Mr. Kraft's third request for review that he filed concerning the same FOIA request. And again, that was just FOIA requests for a month's worth of the board's bills. He submitted that FOIA request, as I recall, on the day after Christmas, while the office was closed, and there have been several requests for review. And so at this juncture, I mean, my recommendation, and Andy, you can voice your opinion about it, would just be like, okay, let's just respond and, again, defend the redactions better than... That's probably my recommendation, because it doesn't really save you a whole lot of attorney's fees. They have to go back and then re-redact 565 pages, considering how much attorney's fees are already spent on this matter. That's my recommendation.
And that was my suggestion to them, unless you have some other deal.
I mean, if you guys, and again, if you guys are just kind of, would prefer, look, we're not going to spend another penny on attorney's fees on this darn thing. If that's what you would prefer, you can just say, sure, somebody will go and re-redact those 565 pages and give the guy those last four digits of the account number. And by the way, I can't guarantee you that that is secure. I mean, if you, for example, have the last four digits of a credit card number, you can, I think, call a credit card company, and they'll give you information over the phone about that account, is my understanding. I don't know if, you know, if there would be, if that's particularly safe, but you could decide that if that is working. So wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Do you guys have an opinion on it?
You could have anybody in the house that could redact those and leave the last four numbers. I mean, could...
Sure, somebody could do that, yeah.
That was avoiding...
There's a hard to be in a certain expenditure of a lot of time, I would say, by administration already.
You're not going to get that back.
I'm sorry.
You're not going to get that back.
No, I'm just saying, right, the administration's time as well comes at a cost, is what I wanted to...
I know I'm not comfortable with legal laws for me.
My stance with it, just so you know, with our attorneys, has been security and safety. I don't understand the rationale behind having someone else. I've never asked for someone else to replace accounts or credit card numbers, and I would never begin to. So that's how I rationalize this with our attorneys at this point. It's not the, at this point, the matter of man-hours and expenses. It's pure safety thing, on my stance. And if somebody can prove to us that it's not safe, or that it is safe to get this kind of information out, I have been in contact with other people, and I'm pretty sure they support the same thought that I have. That's why I've taken the stance I have. If you want to take a different stance as a board, we can.
It looks to me like a consensus of orders. Go ahead, file a position statement, continue to defend the redactions, and don't release the last four digits of credit card numbers or account. That seems to be the consensus of the board. Thank you. And that's a bit for that matter. Yep.
On to approval of revisions to board policies. Two, semicolon, 140, board member use electronic communications. We had the first reading and the last board meeting. I've got the, I'll give the second reading of it, and then I would ask for a motion if that is something that you would like to do. If not, if you die to off the agenda, I guess. But at this point right now, the same thing that I read at the last board meeting, it's under two, to add, two, semicolon, 140, school board, no, school board, communication to and from the board, board member use of electronic communications. Board members shall use their district-issued electronic mail account when engaging in district business by email, provided that such email communications about district business shall not occur among a majority or more of a board forum. When emailing board members, the administration shall direct all such emails to board members' district-issued electronic mail account. Which, again, as I stated at the last board meeting, I already do that. And I will also state that on occasions, which there is also utilizing Jasper County account with. So, again, I don't know if this is asking a whole lot, but again, we... Do your hands.
Did I intend that right to say that the administration uses it?
What's that?
Repeat the last part.
When emailing board members, the administration shall direct all such emails to the board members' district-issued electronic mail account. So in other words, I...
I've never had a problem with that.
Right, absolutely. The problem comes in, and it was, you were preferred to utilize your personal to contact the district or the district for other, yes, account.
That's the rule.
Board members shall use their district-issued electronic mail account when engaging in district business by email, provided that such email communication about district business shall not occur among a majority or more or a board forum. Right? That's stating that the board should communicate with me through their Jasper County issued email account. Which, again, we do a lot of.
I do, we're all... But I use it like that, but I use my own. They don't just... And just frankly, after what Anthony said last time, there's nothing that can be done if I continue on doing that.
Right.
And I do it for security reasons, just the same as the account.
If I send you an email, if I send you an email through my Gmail account, I would like you to believe.
I'm good with that, is my motion?
I don't. One second.
Jen?
Yeah.
Jen? Gordon? John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Next item, B, under approval of revisions to board policies, all applicable, we need a motion. All applicable policies requiring a complaint manager who would be designated for the complaint managers to be effectively, effective immediately, Andrew Dennis Johnson, Kathy Johnson and Travis White. And going back through our documents, it was stated that those were not updated. We couldn't find anywhere that it wasn't updated. So I would ask you, because you brought it to our attention, if there's somewhere that you know that it's not, can you please notify me and let me know so that I can?
They're, they're part of the, the handle, the, I can put after the name, the panel, the complaint, the last one. It was the one that told me the Craig Torres name was still on there. I did not know that.
Okay.
But she was the one that told me.
Laura?
No, it wasn't Laura, right here.
Jessica? Michelle? Tina?
Yeah.
I'll deal with about nine of them in that firm, so. Tina, sorry, okay. So I can check out. Yeah, that works tough. So that will be with a motion being updated. And I want to also read that effectively, this effectively rescinds the misunderstood agreement from September 22nd, 2016 board meeting in our notes stating that we assigned, that the board assigned legal counsel to serve as the district's complaint manager in all complaints. If you look back at it, it says attorney to serve as complaint manager. So I think there may have been some confusion there. So we're coming back to make sure that that's corrected. And I will also say, in the future, if indeed, and we have that option, to assign our legal counsel to be our complaint manager, correct, just as we've done in the past, if we did, that would be sought on an individual case by case by case situation. It will not be an over encompassing, we've asked them to take over all of our complaints. Okay? So I think that clarification will hopefully clean up where we were at before. Do you agree?
Yeah, my problem was not the one on the 22nd, which is where we were at on the tape when we lost it yesterday.
Right.
But the.
Which we'll pick back up on one time.
The, when the, the, a following complaint that I was contacted by Eugene Hanses of Robin Schwartz and why were they on that if they were complaint manager?
Okay.
And by the way, Dennis Whedon, also with Robin Schwartz, was the one we were listening to yesterday that
Correct.
was describing himself as the complaint manager.
Right. So everybody understands what we're doing there?
Yep.
I need a motion to, I'll make it.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
First policy updates, first reading. I can read through all these if you desire, but what I would like to do is just at least tell you a little bit about, if you want more information about what changes, I can bring that to the second reading, which would be next month. Generally pressed, just makes, sometimes it's just a word, sometimes it's a phrase, very minimal changes and we need to bring it for you to adopt it. So first readings, A is two, semicolon, 260, uniform agreements procedure. B is four dash, or four, semicolon, 40, fiscal and business management. C is five, semicolon, 20, workplace harassment prohibited. D is five, semicolon, 200, terms and conditions of employment dismissal. And E is five, semicolon, 20. And that's basically a example, I think, basically what it is, is a resolution to prohibit sexual harassment, which I believe we've got to do some work, lots of districts are having to do some work on updating some things there. So we will be in the process of working on that. First reading, any questions there? We'll bring that back to the April meeting to take care of the second reading and put them in place. Next would be new business. A is approval of the 2017-18 amended school calendar. Current school calendar shows forced no days used. A final calendar will be presented in May. We dodged the ice tomorrow, which I think I heard taking it out of forecast, I hope it's right. We dodged tomorrow, might be heading in the right direction. We better not talk about it too much because of the Jesus. Anyhow, that's, that's the forced no days used. So that will actually make the last day of attendance for students at this point, May 22nd. Teachers Institute would be on the 8th and 3rd. If for some reason we take one more day, we'll bump those again. Hopefully, we don't have to. So I need a motion on that. If there's no questions.
One second. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is presentation and discussion of summer maintenance plan for 2018. I'm going to add Chris, if you would, or you've looked, hopefully you've looked over it, if you've got any questions. The biggest thing on there, I can tell you, and Chris can elaborate, is a Newton Electric, Newton Elementary School electric upgrade because of the city upgrade. Now, we've been talking to them about this, but didn't know it was going to come at the point that it's coming, which is going to be somewhere between $40,000 and $45,000 and it would have to be bid. Everything else on here does not because it's under the bid market. So, you know, you want to elaborate on?
Just that with the Newton Elementary project, I'd say we will have to reason it so high. Once the city adds that, there'll be a pad mount transformer, which everything is overhead right now. And when they do that, we're going to have to update a lot of the breaker boxes inside the school and update some of the condu and everything's going to be underground instead of overhead. So that's, adds a cost and of course, it's expensive, so that's something we would have to get an amendment for. So everything else is just a lot of rigor stuff, a lot of painting going on this year. Crow's Nest, we're still waiting for a, another bid or another on bid letter quote, an estimate for the roof. The first one we got in was kind of high, we thought. If we don't like that one, then we're going to, again, we'll use David and Chris to complete that project. And they are completing that project for the most part except the roof. So those guys kind of looked at that today and they should be getting us back with a quote here pretty soon. So as I think about the list, there's not, everything else is pretty much, a lot of stuff we do, thought every year anyway.
I have a question, get one if you're down.
Go ahead and then we'll come back to some more if you need to.
Element or in, yes, please.
Yes. It is because we used Tiff money last year over that sidewalk out front.
Try running electrical.
Good point. Can you do that?
They could only tell you that one.
Correct. Good idea, I would do that. Also, another one that I would probably bring up, Chris, is we have also sought, just because we had been with our board last year and had some problems, our gym floor issue, we brought in all of this.
We did.
And we did get a quote from them.
We did.
If you looked it over, it's probably $5,000, $6,000.
Right under the $6,000 mark. And that's been coming to both gyms. To both gyms, they come in, they would, they would buff it down and then they would go ahead and add the, the color wax to it.
Which, if you look on here, we've got down $2350 for it, but that's not counting our manpower. And so if we get in a situation, I guess in my opinion, at some point, we might look into this and might even do it this summer, bringing a company like that in so we can free up our guys to do some of the other, like for instance, if we have to do the Crow's Nest or something else around the district. And it's also, if they do it and it's messed up, there's a problem, they're coming back in to fix it on there. So I know in other districts, in the two previous districts that I was in, basically, they had somebody come in and do that. So it's something we can look at. I don't know if any board member would have any kind of feel on what direction we went there. We just trust our judgment and if we think that's something that we should look into, free up manpower, you would be of support.
And we are, just so you know, we are looking into, David's actually, he called, contacted a couple of different of our wax providers or gym floor finish that we've used and getting some costs and what it would cost us, for us, you know, as far as supply wise and then kind of put some others in. So we can give a pretty good idea of what it would cost our guys to do it compared to all of us coming in. And if it's very comparable, I would probably recommend having them come in and do it and free our guys up. That way, we don't have to keep supplies on hand. There again, if we get a bad batch like we did last year, it's not on us, so.
And that, would we need to bid that if it's a service and it's less than $6,000?
Okay.
But we will come back to you with the information that that's what we're doing. Okay? Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Next is, I need a motion to approve, approval to rehire all district administrators with 2018-19 school year with the exception of Kim Kessler, as she has been hired by CC to be the assistant director. And we'll take action on resignations a little bit later. We've shed a few tears, she's going to shed some more. We have been overly pleased with what Kim Kessler has done and continues to do for this district and she's going to be hard to replace. But I will tell you, as I told her again this afternoon, I'm overly excited because as I've stated in an administrative meeting not too long ago, I am extremely excited when our people step out and go into situations like she's going to go into and don't fear that next level or that next opportunity and they're an extension of us wherever they go. So I hope we continue to embrace our people that way. And I don't want to say we can't replace her because whoever we replace, whoever comes in, we're going to expect the same and they're going to do a good job for us, but we're going to have a hard time replacing her, so I think I can say that.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim, thank you for that. And we need a motion.
I'll make it.
One second. John?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
Next is discussion about seeking bids for seven to eight new buses. Here's what I can tell you, at this point right now, we did receive three transportation payments from the state of Illinois this year. Two of those were for last year and one of them is for this year. You're supposed to receive four every year, we're missing three. We got down to a point about a month ago to where we were really worried about making our payments for the transportation account and we're probably going to have to take from somewhere else. And miraculously, we received a payment from the state and we were able to take care of that. So we were very thankful for that. However, what needs to be kept in mind, when you go out and borrow money like we did, we borrowed $630,000 last year, we're probably in a situation where we're looking at about the same. And by the time you paid them off with the interest, it's $713,000. And again, we're going by an $80,000 estimate, I just talked to the bank. Interest rate right now is about 3.75 through the bank. They highly anticipate that to jump based on, what's ironic, the CPPRT, that they're going to steal money out of CPPRT and when the CPPRT money drops, which is dealing with corporate tax in the state of Illinois, every time that happens, your, your interest rate's raised. So there will be an interest rate raised coming in the next short time, I would anticipate by summer. I don't know that we could have anything in place by then, I don't know that we for sure want to do this. Here's what I can say, I'm tracking in our new program, which might be a good opportunity before I go any further to talk a little bit about that if you want to. A new program, training has started. It was supposed to be a long time.
We've had three training sessions so far and the three training sessions, I can tell you, has went very, very, very well. Even today was our, was our third one and it said that we're way ahead and we're really inspired. We're able to get data down and thanks to Aaron Hertz for that. I got his whiz and he's downloaded everything and they've got our hypes and stuff. We went in today and was able to, of course, there's different things you can do and I don't want to bore you all with it, but we can say what roads we can travel, we can't travel bridges, we can't go across, it is a way of limitations in this week. We put all that information in there. And then as we plan our routes, put our routes in our students in there, it sees all those and I plug all this stuff in there and then it says, yeah, that's a good route, but if you go this way, maybe it'll save you a little bit of time and you may have more kids on the bus this way and things like that. So it is really, really went very well, so I'm excited about that. But what I'm really excited about is we've not really got into a lot, just a little bit, but the reports that we can have, make the track of our maintenance, and track all of our expenditures as far as inventory available to track. And of course, it's going to take some good data in there, good data in it as far as what we're, you know, how many gallons of fuel we're going to, how many gallons of oil we're going to do, or things like that. Our kids, our walk zones, our transport zones, our hazardous zones. The year we start making reports, it's just, sorry, I've been in there, we just put it in line, it's, it's out in there. We have, we have a great picture of what the year has looked like in the transportation department for our school district. And of course, it costs money, but the future that you can have with this is GPS tracking as far as being able to see where this bus is, what time. And you might think, well, what do we need that for? Well, if a bus disappears in today's world, unfortunately, and we cannot make any kind of radio contact with it, I can look at, see exactly where that bus is, what it's doing, how fast it's going, things like that. Plus, it's, you know, just other great things, if a bus is on a field trip or if it's on a high candle or a driver, I can see what's this. There's the options available, there's student tracking, you know, as students get on the bus, it's kind of like they go through the lunch line. They swipe their card, they go wherever. I don't have to try to find, at the end of the day, if we can't find Johnny, all I got to do is hit their name and see if they're on that bus. So there's, this door we're in right now is going very, very well. Things are moving on really good and it looks really, really good. And as far as user friendly, I hate to say a kid can do it because a kid can do anything nowadays, but this will make it. So it's, it really is user friendly, it's really, really, left click, left click, left click here, right where you need it. It's a good, it's been a good thing for us. And I spoke with Flora, they would have signed on the program same time we did. And they're having a lot of success with it too, so.
So we're excited, I think it's going to send us in a good direction and it's just because you hit on that too. I think you just might as well plan, if I'm in this seat, we are moving in the direction of trying to do a lot of the things that you just said. For a safety standpoint, I want security when those kids get on the bus and we know where those kids are, where those buses are. Anything that we can do along those lines, we're going to be looking into and they're to be cost to. But what's the value of the job? I think that's pretty high stakes. So, Chris, I appreciate that. Basically, what you're looking at is, we financed last year, went to the bank and asked them, we start making a payment on that purchase this September. We deferred it one year, so we get an opportunity to drive it, drive it for a year, hopefully receive the reimbursement. The reimbursement's going up to 81% this year from 69 in special ed and 71 in regular ed last year, so that's up. But we haven't received those payments. So it's a risk every time we take. The other side too is, at this point right now, and I hate talking about it because it could all change tomorrow, but at this point right now, we have saved $20,000 in repairs compared to last year. Now, do I equate that to eight buses? Maybe, I'm sure it's part of it. It might also be, we're fortunate, maybe some buses got fixed and we're still riding on those fixes. But the big thing that plays out, and we need to make a decision or you need to make a decision, is if we know we're going to do a rotation like this every year, we had a bus that we spent $5,000 on this year, we could have parked that bus in the back corner and said, that one's getting replaced, okay? If they're up in age and we feel comfortable getting rid of it. Instead, we've got to put $5,000 into that and put it back on the road and keep rolling, which we've done because we've got to have it. So we're, we're kind of in a limbo state and it's, it's tough until we see what the state's going to do with reimbursements.
And that $20,000 and that $5,000, we received no reimbursement for, or at least the opportunity for reimbursement.
Correct.
If it's gone, you'd never get it back.
Yep. So.
What's the long-term plan?
Long-term plan, the long-term plan is to continue doing this every single year. And once you get every single bus in this district to five years, whether warranted, we'll receive a depreciation value on there and then we've started the second rotation. When you get 10 years deep in our rotation right now. When you get 10 years deep in our rotation right now, you will then begin to really see the benefits of, you'll have a steady payment, it will be right there, and then our reimbursement back. For instance, as we said last year, we did this, and it's the same. We've been told that the value of that bus, if we drive it 15,000 miles a year, five years, 75,000 miles, it's gonna be valued at about 40, 35 to 40%. So we would go, when we go to trade that in, and after five years, we're going back with the idea of bringing in a new. Now we get an $80,000 bus, you're basically gonna spend about 50 to 55,000 on that bus, but you're getting reimbursement for the full 80. Okay, so there's where we start really making some hay and doing some things hopefully to help. That's a long way out. But again, we're, we're gonna talk about a lot of strategic planning this summer, and when you're dealing with buses, that right there is probably one of the big things that we're looking at.
We are receiving reimbursement for all warranty work. They're paying us to work on their school buses.
It's a credit right now, but it's going back towards the other parts that we buy for other buses that are breaking down.
And in this rotation, I will tell you that if we go ahead with this rotation, the buses that we are sinking the most amount of money into right now, repair-wise and maintenance cost-wise, will be gone.
That last year was right, which happened after the amortization schedule.
Right.
Your payments are 145, 342, oh, seven.
Correct.
But it's, it's a five-year rotation of seven buses. You're single, you're, you're single paid. That last year, it's 915, 90,000. You're eight buses.
Yeah, eight last year, eight buses.
Right. What it equates to, that's what, that's what we. Seven buses. Schedule I, it's 45. It's 45. I mean, that's what I got a copy of, Kim from People's Management. I didn't have the final.
You're talking about from last year's?
From 2017.
Right. I don't have that information with me. I have the amortization schedule for the next purchase, and it says 142,000, 764, 30. It is what we might have been paid. Seven for. No, that's 8,000 times, yes, no, eight. 8,000 times eight, 640, six, four, one, 640,000 up. I'm sorry.
Years of payments?
No, eight buses.
I'm sorry, okay.
Paid over five, paid over five, right. Where, where I'm at with this process is, we can bid them, which doesn't mean we have to buy them. So we could go out and get all the ducks lined up here, and then we come back in and make that decision. I just really wanted to throw it out tonight and say, do you support us going forward with bidding? Because am I correct, we don't have to buy, even though we bid something, you don't have to buy that.
No, that's right, you're absolutely right.
We have all of right.
You go out for bid, and then you enter a lease, so you're actually leasing a kind of temporary. But you did that bidding, which was, which was a really good thing, you did the lowest price on the bus.
Right.
Yeah. It's just that the bank is gonna come in and finance it, totally lawful, and it gives you the best deal theoretically.
I'd say that is.
Everybody good with that, just?
Yeah. Well, you won't have any figures unless you do.
Right. Right. And we do think it'll be less than 8,000, but we'll let that play out in just a fall market. Okay, we'll do that. Next is for the IHSA renewal for 2018-2019 school term. Just be the, a motion to, something you're ever here. Make it.
Melissa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Then we got the approval of the E-Rates contract, which again, I stated I set a new one at each of your desks. But really, the only difference, Aaron Towne looked through it this afternoon and saw Newton Elementary was not included on there and needed to be, so I think that's the only change. But what he gave me from a memo standpoint is, we see the accompanying NewWave communications contract for internet services in Newton Elementary and Newton Community High School for 2018-19, only one year. And granted, we could get a better deal if we do a three-year, but because of more information already, you'll understand why. We currently have 100 megabytes fiber internet service from New Wave that is shared between the two school buildings. The new contract includes double the bandwidth, so we're gonna go to 200 internet speeds for not much more than we're paying now per month. I think it came out for like 60 bucks more per month, and again, the only reason we did that is because we're going to a one-year deal rather than a multi-year deal. I believe this should help us alleviate some internet speed issues that we have been experiencing at times. I'm only proposing to sign a one-year contract because long-term, I recommend that we, as a district, explore options for utilizing E-Rate funds to have our own fiber constructed. This way, we could take, we could take advantage of some other internet provider options, and I believe give us more bandwidth at a lower price. Due to E-Rate deadlines, deadline constraints, I felt it best to wait a year to have more time to plan for the project. So we'll put that, those ideas together, hopefully this summer, be able to come back to you next year with a multi-year plan. I trust Aaron Kurtz with my life when it comes to these things, so I hope you do too. So if you do, we, we need approval of this E-Rate contract, that would just basically get us through one more year, and then we'll seek some other directions.
Make it. One second. Rob?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes. Gordon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
2018-19, I'm sorry, 2018-19 school calendar. Uh, we need a motion to approve that, if you wanna look through it. Uh, I will tell you, one of the biggest changes that we did make to it was we took all half-day in services out, and simply because we did the chaos that it creates for parents and for our staff, and not really sure that we were utilizing, able to get as much out of those days as what we thought would be beneficial. So we think that will help both parents and us, and we've just gone to four full-day institutes throughout the course of the year. It's gonna make some months, if you took a look at it, it's gonna make some months where we only get one day off, or, yeah, one, I think we've got one day off in several of those, pending no snow. Tried to balance out the semesters as much as we could, came out fairly close, but there's about a seven-day difference. Bank on, there's likelihood that if the snow hits, it'll hit after Christmas, so that'll help make up for the unbalanced, so to speak, calendar. So if you're all right with that, we need a motion on that.
Make it. One second.
Jed?
Yes.
Yes.
Gordon? Yes.
Melissa, or John?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Next is a discussion of potential actions to secure an architect or a performance contractor, I guess, or a construction manager, I should say as well, for future improvements to Jasper County school buildings. Many of you are probably aware, and those of you who are not, we've had multiple building committee meetings. Through those building committee meetings, the last few, we've basically, uh, had, let's see, we had ADG Architects out of Mount Carmel come in, we had GRP Mechanical, which is a performance contracting, come in and present to us. We had the Upchurch Group out of the Mattoon-Churleson area, which is architectural firm, come in and present to us. And then last night, we had SM Wilson out of St. Louis, I believe they are, come in, and he's more on the construction management line, all present to us in those meetings. Fortunately, Rob, Jed, and John have been involved in a lot of that, as well as our own staff, Chris, and, and a lot of our administration. So there have been people involved in that process and listening. Again, that group has absolutely no action items or movement on what we're doing. So what I want to do right now is have a discussion about what direction we wanna go, and some of the options are, and Steve's gonna help us out a little bit with this, because this is up his alley, which unfortunately, he's here tonight, because it's probably not Tony's expertise, I don't think. So it is fortunate you're here with us. With that said, you're looking at several different angles, okay? GRP Mechanical, we currently utilize, and the last project that this district did back in 2015, the contract says 14. Uh, they're performance-based. If you go a performance-based direction, which I can tell you right now, our historical, our history with them, and it's not me, I've just been here two years, but I've seen it. All of our people speak very highly of the, the work that they did for us. Bob Florety's spent a lot of time helping us, anytime we've been able to, needed to call, kind of as an architect slash whatever, I guess, to give us suggestions and kind of look at the future. You've got performance contracting on this hand, and you've got your architects, which is our ADG out of Mount Carmel. You've got Upchurch out of Mattoon, and then you throw SM Wilson kind of in between the two, in my opinion, which they are construction management. So now you're looking at a wide range of options for us to go out and seek further information on doing a phase two, which was established a long time ago, more or less on the health-life-safety line, and/or, and I say and, uh, expanding onto some potential buildings with the idea of closing down St. Louis at some point. Okay? So we need to make a decision tonight, in my opinion, and this is why we've got it down as an action item, possible action, is to put us in a position to go out and get either RFQs or RFPs for which direction we want to go. Can I say that correctly?
Totally.
For being a guy who knows nothing about construction.
Totally, no, you know, yeah, no, that's totally. Okay, so, yeah, basically.
Put my mobilization away.
Your decision, you guys are trying to put a team together to help, to help lead some of these massive facility, you know, projects going forward. So one, you know, issue that you guys need to decide is whether you want to hire a performance contractor. And what does that mean? A performance contract is a special kind of contract under the school code that is allowed for energy conservation measures generally, where the energy and operating savings costs over the life of a like 20-year term will basically pay for the cost of those improvements. And under the school code, you could just issue a request for proposals. It's a 30-day window to get proposals from these performance contracting companies. So you would likely get a proposal from GRP, you would get a proposal from perhaps a couple other performance contracting companies. So let's talk about the pros and cons of a performance contractor. A pro is that basically when you have a performance contractor, they are not only managing the entire project, but they're also using their own forces to accomplish some of the work. So basically, you have, the buck stops at one, you know, place, and they're gonna be entirely kind of on the hook. So what's the option, what's the alternative, instead of having a performance contractor? Instead of having a performance contractor, you could have an architect who's the designer, and a construction manager who manages and oversees the kind of implementation of the architect's vision by working with the trade groups, and then you would have these prime contracts with a number of trades, plumbing, electrical, you know, concrete, et cetera. So the alternative to performance contracting tends to involve more parties, but what is the benefit? Well, the benefit is that the trade contracts are all publicly bid. So they're, they're awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, okay? And that is supposed to deliver savings to this company. And then the architect's fee is usually set at a percentage of a large project, and the construction manager's fee is also set at a percentage of a, of a large project. Now, some of the work that you guys are thinking of doing, for example, the addition, that is not eligible for a performance contract. So you already will need an architect, and you know that. So therefore, you guys, it sounds like nobody would oppose selecting an architect for the district, right?
Oh, yeah, I think we're gonna have to have an architect.
So you're gonna approach. And the process, and the, and the process for doing that, I'm gonna say, is to publish a request for qualifications, to, you know, select an architect, and allow architect firms to submit their, to submit their proposals, and then the district will rank them, and then maybe it's final decision of hiring, hiring an architect. So that's one thing that you guys, it sounds like you're all on board with doing. Another thing, you probably will need a construction manager on that big addition, right, project. You're gonna probably want a construction manager, because managing the trades, coordinating all that work, it's a lot of work for the administration. I mean, for, for a small administration, that's very difficult. So generally, that's why you hire a construction manager. And so you're gonna want to select a construction manager, so the question would be how? What you could do is via like a public and open process, and issue a request for qualification. But I think what you really need to decide is, well, you also wanna be doing some of this work, like the health-life kind of safety issues, work on the interior buildings, whether you wanna do it via this performance contract model or not. And GRP Mechanicals, I, I don't know that, I mean, we don't know if they would be willing to basically do the work on the interior of the buildings on anything other than a performance contract basis.
I don't really have that. What we do know is they have stated, correct me if I'm wrong, those of you that were there, they would be willing to be a CM if they stated that, correct? Manny, and I can tell from my standpoint, and I've had lots of conversations with lots of people in the last few days, to me, it comes down to, we, we either gotta go with a performance contracting, it's somebody that's gonna oversee it all, or a construction manager that's gonna oversee it all. I, I can't go be the construction manager, Chris can't go be the construction manager. We have other duties that right now, that is a massive project that we're talking about. So we've got to have some more pieces to that in order for this to roll and roll smoothly. So to me, those are the options, and an architect's gonna be involved in that process. So let's open this up for comments or questions, because I'm sure people have some, some stuff they wanna say. Chris and I have spoken, and I've asked who to speak too, because again, the history of the district, okay? And I'm not selling any of them, because I've told Chris point-blank, I, I, I haven't been here. Okay, so I just understand what my people have said, that the relationship with them, and the Bob Fowretys of the world, have done an amazing job for us. There's no question in my mind that the other people that we've brought into this room probably can do great things. And I think the bad taste in some people's mouths about architects, I don't think we had those people in our meetings that we would be concerned about some of those things. That's a meaning, that's a meaning we won't. You could have a problem with any of them, there's no question about it. But when it comes down to it, we've gotta pick somebody, and we gotta go. Because this is holding us back from getting diligent sense and finding out if indeed this is something that's feasible for our community to look into as we move forward. The clock is ticking, and we, we, we gotta get out and send them rebuild. It, it's just gonna have to be something, and that's an opportunity to save money. How do we do that? That's where we're at with wanting to bring something like this on. I'll shut up. Next.
Do we know how much GRP's charged? I mean, percentage-wise, what was their, no?
Well, you don't have a clue, because, you know, they were the only ones that bid.
Right.
So it was wide open, but.
I don't know.
Eighteen will be.
I think Honeywell or somebody else, remember, the performer come out for 30 days. I think there was more than one performance contractor that put their hat in the, hat in the mix to be selected, but I believe the GRP was selected out of that mix. Whenever they checked, whenever.
But as far as bidding.
I didn't go back. Yeah, as far as bidding, you know.
It's not a financial decision.
Once you're.
But qualifications are met without knowing how much they charge.
Exactly. Once your performance contractor or build-based contractor is, is picked, then that's, they take the hat from there. As he said, it's the one, they take it over from there, and they do all the bidding.
Since we have already. ADG, ADG. Those were both, the architect and the CM.
He did say that.
That's true.
And since we have used GRP, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have to ask for another 30-day, since we've already worked with them. Do we have to?
That was.
Because they've already, because they've already, they've already initiated phase one, phase two, and phase three. They've already given us a plan for phase two and phase three, they've completed phase one.
Well, the, and when was that?
They've completed that in 2015.
When was the contract?
14.
14.
The copy. Yeah, I think if you wanted to, you know, but I'm, for something that was three years ago, I think it would make sense to do another publication.
Why is that question?
No.
Well, we didn't have to.
With GRP, though, we don't choose our own architect. You get their, their, I have a big problem with that.
That's not a mystery, because talking to GRP, talking to GRP.
Their own inspection.
They said that we could tell them, people that we'd like to go with.
They said that we could tell them, people that we'd like to go with, and then be willing to work with them people. And that came from Bob Fogarty's end of his life.
An outside source, you're saying, an outside architect?
They said if there's people that we was willing, that we wanted, that we would, that we would like to work with, that they'd be willing to contact those people and see if they're even able, if they even want to be part of that.
That's GRP.
That's GRP. Now, I'm not saying all performance contractors like that. I don't know of performance contractors. All I know is that we had the experience of this. I watched, I sat through all five presentations, the two architects, the contractor, the construction manager, and the performance contractor. There's no doubt, I agree with Andy, probably had those people, probably could've come in and done, and can do a job for us, not had much experience with those people, because I don't know them. I can tell you that when I first took over from Mr. Minneville, we were just finishing up a project that the project manager and an architect was involved, and the job was not done on time, the job went over budget, first time it was priced out eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, then it was priced at one million, one-three, ended up being over two million dollars.
And he got ten percent, made a hundred and thirty thousand off of his mistake.
And we had. We had a shop that had no heat in the middle of November, that we finally forced to, forced them to bring heat to it. So we, and then we had a long list of things that we are still dealing with today. One thing for safety-wise, we can't lock our cafeteria doors. And a box of parts was handed to our, our head of maintenance, and said, can't handle it. You guys are gonna take care of it. Now, not saying they're about to do that, that's not what I'm saying at all. But that's just the, the experience that we have lived. As a district, as an operations and maintenance director, as principals, that's what we have lived. That's what we've had to live through. These are things that we are still living with every single day, that we're trying to take care of kids, and we're trying to make sure that the buildings are the best they're supposed to be. When you talk about visions, who'd have thought, when you look back, whenever this property was bought for the high school, who'd have thought? Probably the guy that bought the ground from Farm Bureau all the way West End Avenue probably said, why in the world are you buying five acres of ground for a nineteen-twenty-one school? You know, or why in the world are you building a football stadium that huge? But you look back at those people now, and you say, smart move. Smart move, you guys done it right. So I think as we go forward, as we go through this, we can't look at what we want now and what we feel we want. We have to look at, with the vision, we have to say, as she said, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, forty years. Do we wanna be known as, why in the world did that board do that? Why in the world did that administration do that? Or kudos to those guys. They've done something great. So whenever we make these decisions, we're not just talking about today, we're talking about what we're gonna make, what's gonna be best for our kids for the next forty years. When I'm dead and gone, my great-grandkids, if they're pleased to go on here, they can say, whoever done this, the next guy that gets in this job, this C can say, very well done. Okay? Now, dealing with GRP, the construction manager, the one guy that gave the quote for a construction manager, he sat there and he said, now, these guys can't do this for you, and these guys can't do this for you, and these guys can't do this for you. Either he don't know, you know, which very well could be, or he was set up making us up, which are all salesmen. But everything he said they couldn't do, they done it for us. Those guys lived here, and they walked with us, they talked with us, they took in our opinions. Everything we wanted, they done. There was never, nope, nothing to do. Never once has that brought up. After the project, they trained us, they, Bob Fogarty, he looks at our, at our HVAC, he looks at air conditions, he's constantly monitoring things. I can still call those guys today, and they'll help us out, and never a dime has been charged any of us. None of us, they've never charged one thing. He come in, he crawled through our ceilings, he crawled through our tunnels, he got behind our walls, he got through everything. Now, you are exactly right, we don't know. We don't know what it cost us, what it cost them. But I do know, like you said, you're gonna pay a CM a percentage, which is, I hear, around five percent. You're gonna pay a contractor or an architect, which is around ten percent, and you're gonna have a ten percent contingency. So you've got twenty-five percent added to that project. On a nineteen million dollar project, if a performance contractor bucks or pads, pads a contract, two million, so you take it back to seventeen, and you add that twenty-five percent to that project, now we're at twenty. So performance contractor charges nineteen, architect CM charges twenty.
Also.
I could be a performance. I'm just telling you, this is what we've lived through. This is what we're living through today. And whatever we decide, this is what we're gonna live through. Every single one of us sitting here is gonna live through this. And we want, and I believe, and I know, that we want what's best for school, for kids, and we want what's best for the district, but we won't be able to say that we're done for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, when we walk away with this, we've got something to do. Not, not saying we won't have to fix an air conditioner in twenty years. But I can tell you, when you have poor design, and you have poor trade skills on top of your, on your buildings, we're dealing with that. Not saying these guys will do that better, guys. Not saying that at all. I'm just telling you what we lived through and what we know.
Thanks, Chris.
They charged us three and a half million to do that project.
Who did?
GRP.
Who did?
Yeah, it's on the performance contract that you sent us today. Somewhere in that.
No, you mean the bid, the total job, sorry.
Okay. That's interesting. Out of kindness of their heart, they give us a hundred thousand dollars in the inventory. Just out of kindness in their heart. They wrote the specs for the whole thing. They were the architect for the whole thing. How many other hundred and fifty, or a hundred thousand dollars did they have laid on there? If we can tell you that. And you don't, unless you bid.
You don't.
Unless you give the specs and bid it.
But at least you know your bottom dollar, your top dollar. We have a one-point-one million dollar project. We're gonna come up with a hundred million dollars.
Or a CM. You'll know it from them.
That's not what he just said.
That's what I just said. That last project we had, top dollar was one-point-one. It was over two million.
Why did we bond two-point-two million?
I wasn't part of that.
That project was bonded at two million. And ironically, it came out to two-point-one in the end.
I'm just telling you what we lived through.
But I'll, I'll agree that, that design architects, I would never recommend. But I know work that ADG's done. They've done right about right. And we have a school right there with them, we pay taxes there. And I know the kind of work they've done. So, you know, to compare one to, to one that you had a bad experience with on the, the whole thing.
I didn't say that's right. I said they made a very great job. I just told you the experience we lived through.
Is there any other cons?
Yeah, I want to go in, I want to talk a little bit more. My biggest back thing with GRP is architect, CM, they do it all, and they're like this. To me, that's a hundred percent wrong. I want my architect, I want my CM, I want CM working for us, all the staff, the architect working for us, all the staff. And they should hit head-on. CM fighting for us, architect fighting for us, and that's what we've done. Me looking at this in construction, I've been in for a long time, you're paying a lot of money, there's money to it. I heard no change of person, okay? It's there. Nobody does this business for free. Everybody's here for one reason, to make money. It's a double, it's a, it's a different world. That's why the CM and the architect have to work things out, in per se. Not always at the cheapest of places, by no means, you know what I mean? By giving us a product, the architect's backed something, you've got the CM here, then you've got the general, well, you've got that CM there every day. If he sees, hey, this, that was supposed to be more sure route than a regular route, he blacked it. Normal people don't know that. If you have a CM there every day, hammering this, keep everybody in line, including the architect, it blows. This school system's never worked with a CM like the one that's here, or like the two architects that presented to us. I've worked with all three. I am a hundred percent comfortable with any of them. But I do not support a G.
Gus was, Gus was fired because he wouldn't work with the CM. And both those architects said, we didn't need a CM.
Well, the CM won't be fired for not getting along with the other guys in this aspect, unless we fire him. The architect can fire.
We need to come to a consensus here on what we want to advertise, but we're not making a decision on exactly what'll happen tonight, but we do take somebody off the table if we don't, I shouldn't say that, we don't technically take anybody off the state table if we go CM, architectural route, because GRP said they could do that. They just can't do it under a performance-based contract. Correct? And was I wrong? Did, did we not hear that they said they could do it that way?
Yeah, they said they could do it, probably could do it, but then we select architect. Yeah, they run select the architect.
But that would come back in the RFQ, RFQ that we put out, correct? Would that information be divided?
But how, how will you ever know what you could get it for if you do a bid with an architect?
Oh, right.
How would you ever know?
What do you mean, how I could get the project?
Like GRP. GRP's gonna come in, and they're gonna make a proposal off of their specs, off of their, what they see.
Right.
What they see that you need.
Right.
And, and they're, they're gonna bid. And, you know, let's, let's say you buy a, say you buy a dump truck, and I sell bodies. If I can convince you that my, my truck, my body has, has features on it that nobody else has had, if I can convince you to let me spec that out, who's gonna get it bid?
Well, whoever does.
It's gonna be me, because nobody else can meet the specs.
Right, absolutely.
And that's what happens with, with a performance contract.
All I can tell you is, I have called around, and I'm still in the middle of doing the process, I feel like it'll, that'll be done tonight, and I've not heard a complaint from anything GRP's done, anything ADG's done, anything SM Wilson's done, or anything Upchurch has done. Not a complaint.
I can walk you through people. I can walk you through people that's got complaints.
About GRP?
Yes.
So we've got.
Number one's the process, the process. I can take you to a school and use it, to use one of the others, the process, complain about it, and I can take you to another school district where they've done more. So what we need to do.
Well, then there are some complaints.
One, I'm saying, I'm not putting down the work that you're, I am not, I'm not in any way. I just wanna see the numbers. I just wanna see the numbers.
And you're not gonna see it.
I agree, you're not gonna see it.
But if you go the CM route with them, you'll see the numbers, right?
Architect too. Otherwise, if we're not picking the architect, you're still in St. Murrayville.
But, but you don't eliminate, there, nobody's eliminated tonight if you go the CM route. If we go performance contracting, you eliminate everybody. You pick, you're picking GRP. That's the only, that's, yes, that's not true, because you'll put it out, and there could be people that haven't presented to us yet. So they'll be eligible to seek the RFP.
Do you like the CM route? If we go CM route, then we also tie that architect as well, correct?
Yes. I think, I think we have to.
Construction management doesn't have an architect.
Correct, they, you don't do this, they're really.
So we have two, we're gonna have two requests for proposals, and, and so it's for, for architecture and for construction management.
Correct.
Yeah, you missed last night's meeting. You should. I've got a video, if you wanna watch it.
I like that route, that's the route I would support from there.
So.
Need a motion?
But what, what do you go propose? I mean, will they bid personally?
There's no money.
You don't want your, do?
Exactly. This is, this is where the law comes in. Okay, so to select an architect, there's a special statute that applies, and, and it is a qualifications-based selection. So what the district's supposed to do, to select, you make a fine selection of an architect for a project is to, unless the district already has a satisfactory relationship with an architect, which I understand it, the district doesn't. So what you have to do is you publish a request for qualifications, and then you let architectural firms submit their statements of qualifications, what they can do for you, but you can actually request economic information. What you're supposed to do with the proposals that architects select, is you're supposed to rank them in order of who's the most qualified. And then you start attempting to negotiate a contract with your top-ranked architect. So that's, that's the, like, the architect that you feel, this is the most qualified. So that is the way that you're supposed to select an architect, under the statutes. And then for construction managers, you can select a construction manager basically anyone the board wants. But I think a lot, it's very, because, because construction managers are exempt from bidding, there's actually a court case on that, as a professional skill, and it's not covered by that architect selection statute, so you can do it however you want. Usually districts will do it similar to the way they select an architect, like a request for qualifications, except with the CM that would request economic information. So you'd be able to know, oh, yeah, this one charges whatever, five percent, this one charges, you know, something like that. So it's, so if you wanted to, it sounds like everybody's on board with, with publishing, you know, a, a formal request, you know, for proposals from architecture firms, with proposals concerning CM work, right? And then.
Performance contractings out.
The performance contracting issue is what you gotta really decide. It is, this, I mean, it sounds like you're probably opposed to even issuing an RFP, you know, and then asking, okay, is, is anybody in favor on the board of issuing an RFP for performance contract?
Can you ask a vote?
You can, yeah, you can, of course, you can do it, proposals and then not award any, any, you know, you totally could, you know, just, just publish it, see what comes in, and then not end up, not, end up not awarding any of those proposals. So you can do all three, actually, several things, if you want, and that way you're not cutting off any.
The performance one, though, is gonna be a thirty-day procurement.
That's correct, it's a thirty-day window before you can get the proposals back.
So do I hit the next board meeting?
No.
You won't. So I gotta wait another board meeting to be able to get that in plus.
Correct.
Which just puts us off the menu, I guess that's, and based on what everybody said, they can have stuff to us back in a month, probably, on, on version things of what we're looking at. So it would be doable.
I mean, it sounds like everybody on the board wants to do the two, you know, architect and CM, kind of get, get that process in motion, but then as for the performance contract, it sounds like you guys really need to make a decision, whether you want to.
Or your proposal.
Initiative to issue this. Yeah, putting it out on the street and asking.
Performance?
Or not?
I don't care, too.
We got two noes.
I'm not against that. If you're just looking.
If we're just looking. I'm not against the vote, it's not quite a meeting. We worry about the process, but I don't like to go so early.
We're almost sure we're not good with using this counter race there, but it's fun.
Right.
So you got, had three noes and two maybes.
I have a husband who works construction too, and he would say no, which is a performance contract also.
All right, it sounds like that, that there's not a consensus on the board to move forward with a request.
If you did, performance contract, could a place like GRP bid both the CM and the performance contract? Or do they have to just bid?
Sure, they could, they could do both, yeah.
They can come in, bid, or, or the CM.
Right.
But we would just skip, and we picked the architect.
What, what?
We picked the architect, they could, they could bid.
The stipulation's CM.
But the stipulation is, we're picking the architect.
Which you can set that. Right.
And you see all the numbers, I think, I mean, that's all, that's the main thing, I wanna see the numbers.
Yeah.
So where are we going?
It sounds like you're not gonna publish a, we're not proposing for a performance contract.
So it's just CM and... Will you help me with that process?
Yeah, absolutely.
How many more do you need?
I think we do.
How many more do you need?
Do you need to take action on seeking an architect?
You don't really need to. I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, you take, you have to, you have to, so they have to vote to award contracts? Actually, kind of, since publishing and seeking proposals and stuff, it doesn't bind the district anything, so our firm believes that that can be done without any board vote, but, but yeah, it's really good, that you had this discussion, so you're not gonna, now spend the time on an RFP for performance, but it seems that there's not.
Okay, last thing I have underneath that then, is I also would like to know, and I asked the, the, told the building committee last night that I would ask you as a board, if there are questions of any kind that as this process continues, that you have for them and us, some of us sitting in this room, moving forward to research, to discuss, and things like that, that you'd like to have a feel back from. And in all honesty, I'm not gonna ask you to do that at this point right now, but if there's something that comes up, shoot me an email, I'll add it to the list, so that we can make sure we're steering our building committee in the direction that she wants to go as far as helping research. Next, action item, approval of contract, contractual services for Susan A. Seiler. Seiler, for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. As you can see down here, and I probably got all these out of order, would have helped with a lot of things, but, again, that's where I like them, but, sorry. Two days a week for Erica Schumaker's return to the year. Erica Schumaker, as you can see down here, and the manager is actually resigning from the district. She has taken the job, was hired, um, in Effingham. Appreciate her services, but at the same time, she is leaving us. So to make it through the rest of the year, Kim's done some extensive research and trying to find someone to replace her, and we couldn't do it, so we're gonna go at it with a part-timer. And I believe I concluded, you've got a copy, right, of what we were talking about, March, April, May, basically, gonna cost us about eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars total is the estimate. But we've gotta have her, we've gotta have somebody in this role to be able to serve the needs of kids in there.
So, did she work with somebody, or she's...
She's independent. She does, uh, two days a week at Beecher City with the same contractual agreement. She's been doing that for, she's been four or five years.
So there's no further questions, I need a motion.
Uh, yes, Gordon.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Melissa. Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Next, I need a, a motion for approval of volunteers. We have Stephanie Nicely as a mentor at Newton Elementary. Appreciate mentorship. A motion.
Gordon.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is approval of resignations. A is Kim Kessler, special needs administrator, effective June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. She will be headed to CC to take over as the assistant director, in hopes of taking over the director position in a few years, if all works out. And we wish her well, but I need a motion to...
Are we doing this on separate?
We'll do them separate.
I mean, sure.
So we got, now we should stay?
Yeah.
Let me try that, perform on that, maybe, but it doesn't work. I'll try it again.
Can I lump all these together, or no? Better, better? Is that it?
Okay, I just have to catch up.
We'll lump them together. Can I lump all these together?
We can do that perfectly fine.
Let's lump them together.
Yes, and they're set together.
Right. Right. Okay, first one's Kim Kessler, second one. Erica Schumaker, speech and language pathologist, effective at the completion of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. C is Brad Blummer, Newton Elementary teacher, effective at the completion of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. D is Kelsey McAllister, Newton Elementary teacher, effective at the completion of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. E is Jan Thompson, Newton High School PE and health teacher, effective at the completion of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. And the final one is Amy Casey, as head coach of the Newton High Girls Basketball, effective immediately since that season's over. The motion.
I'll make it.
John.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
Next is approval of employment. I have, I need a motion to employ George Beerman as a boys, varsity boys basketball coach, starting with the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year.
Melissa. Yes. Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Next is approval of retirement, Marilyn Reisner. I need a motion to approve Marilyn Reisner to retire, Newton Elementary teacher, effective at the completion of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year.
Or we need to say no to?
Make sure we have any lights on.
Yep, I'll make it.
You try.
Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Next, I need a before-close session with the approval to, for student to hire for next month, if needed.
Make it.
Aaron got you circling, sorry. Uh, Jen. Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
John. Melissa. Yes, Rob.
Yes.
At this time, need a motion to go to a closed session for five ILCS one-twenty-two, C nine, narrative student discipline.
There you go.
Uh, yes, Gordon. John.
Yes.
Yes, Rob. Jen.
Oh, yeah, I needed an hour of time. Back to my side seat.
I don't know, I just sit anywhere.
Let's take one.
Need a motion for a closed session?
John.
Yes.
Melissa. Yes. Rob. Jen.
Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
At this time, we have one action item, uh, coming out of closed session. I will need a motion for approval of the resolution to expel a student for two calendar years, full expulsion in advance, provided certain conditions are met. I would also like to state, before we do this, everyone involved in this process has been extremely, extremely cooperative, and we're very appreciative of that. The parents were very appreciative of the hearing of what we're doing to the school district, so we need a motion.
Make it.
Melissa.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Yes, Gordon.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
All right, at this time, need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.